I wish I'd.
Thirty, let's roll call please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Gainer?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Welsh?
Here.
Mary Kovich?
Here. Everyone's here tonight, so please stand and join us for opening prayer, pledge of allegiance. So, Lord, we just thank you for this meeting and pray you'd give us your wisdom and help us through, help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of everybody concerned in this city, Lord in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
I so move, we approve, the agenda is printed.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We do have a special visitor tonight, we're gonna introduce and swear in a new Ark City Police Officer, Madison Friesen.
Mayor, commissioners, uh, tonight I have the honor of introducing the newest member of our team, Madison Friesen. She is a recent graduate, and I mean very recent, was just finished classes, oh, from Cali County, from the Criminal Justice Program, and she is another product of our excellent relationship we have with the program over there. I think this was about a year ago that Frank reached out to us and said, I have somebody who I think would be an ideal candidate for your, your department, and we began having contact and recruiting her, so we recruited for about a year, and she got to the point where she was ready to apply, and she, of course, passed all of her testing and background with flying colors, and so she is here today with us to join our team. She will be, of course, starting with our department, working with the field training officer, and going through probably the first two stages of our four-stage training program, and then she'll go to the academy for a fourteen-week academy. We don't have a date yet, we're on wait list, so we're hoping we get an early one, we actually have quite a few officers signing up, so there's a little bit of wait. And then once she completes that, she'll come back to the department and finish the field training program and be released on her at that point. So, still have a long journey ahead, but we're very happy to have her join our team, and we think that she'll be an excellent addition to what we have going on at the police department. So, at this time, I'd like to ask the city clerk to issue the oath of office.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, on my honor, I will never betray my badge,
I will never betray my badge,
my integrity,
my integrity,
my character,
my character,
or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage,
I will always have the courage,
to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States,
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States,
and of the state of Kansas,
and of the state of Kansas,
my community,
my community,
and the agency I serve.
and the agency I serve.
Thank you very much, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
What is she, what is her heart in, I mean, is it in criminal investigation or just patrol or?
Uh, I think for right now it'd be patrol, I hope to one day specialize, but I wanna kinda find out what my interest in for specializing.
Just checking it out, okay, very good.
The answer's already.
Yeah. Thank you.
He just got a non-answer.
I see one person signed up on the agenda, or I see on the visitor sheet.
It's Spring Hill Golf Course, I believe.
Okay.
My chairman, ladies.
They're at their home.
Officers.
So, we do have one person sign up here to speak to the commission, so, Monty, come on up.
Hey, I'm doing.
I'm doing all right.
I'm really proud of this Spring Hill Golf Course. My other people that usually come up here with me couldn't make it today, so I'm on my own, so wish me luck. We came last time and asked for somebody, and y'all was gracious enough to give it to us. We're asking for your help one more time. We have fought and we've done all kinds of advertising for the course. We got it at Ark Law Parade, we sent a Christmas parade to second place. We got a display up there at Scott's Body Shop for the North Pole. We're doing everything we can to promote this course, more than it's ever been done in the past. We ran into a bad spot money-wise due to the weather. We're needing, we got, we got enough to pretty much get us through this month, but we gotta get started on next month. And we're asking for a thousand dollars. I have a budget that I kinda got set up for what we're, that for the whole month if y'all will.
Tell, tell us your business plan, Monty.
Well, we, we just wanna keep that course going, we have several, we got a deal going now where we're having a twenty-five mile run at a golf course, and we've already had thirty-three people involved in it, and we just had it on the internet for four days.
Running on their, running?
Running the course.
Twenty-five miles?
Five miles.
Oh, five miles.
You said twenty-five first.
Yeah, you did, I thought, wow.
That's a lot of people for about twenty-five miles.
I don't think we, no one can run twenty-five miles of that course.
Yeah, I thought it was quite a few laps, I'm sure.
Yes, it is, and we got thirty-three people that's coming to it already, and like I said, it's only been on there for four days. And we're predicting with, we talked to the people that run this running club out of Wichita, they're predicting that we may get up to a hundred or more people. And the race is January the twelfth. We've already, I've already got, uh, they lead advertising, getting t-shirts, 'cause all runners get t-shirts. We've got businesses that are helping to pay for their t-shirts, and we gotta go, if we can just get to March, you know, we've been doing this ten-dollar raffle for a free membership. A lot of our new kids that have been coming in bought tickets, and they're waiting to see if they win a membership before they buy one. So, we just gotta get to March, and I think that thousand dollars should pretty, gets up. I don't know, I may be back and I may not, hopefully not. 'Cause I, I'd, I'd rather us do it on our own and have them ask for money.
Have you seen, have you seen an increase in the youth in our community coming to the golf course?
When we, when we started that incorporation deal that we talked about last time, the youth of Vector Morton Building, we're talking kids just barely out of high schools working that are starting to come to the golf course, quite a few of them.
That's cool.
So, and that's what the, this golf park course needs youth, because there's a lot of us elderly out there, and the youth is starting to really come back in, golf's starting to pick back up. We got, that's why we wanna keep this going for them and for our elderly, but that's all they have. We got groups that, our elderly group comes in every day, one o'clock, that's part of their schedule, they get up, they drink coffee, they come to the golf course, they go home. So, we gotta keep it going for them also.
How much are they paying to run?
Twenty-five dollars a person, and they say that, they said that we're the cheapest, well, not cheapest, the most.
Inexpensive.
Inexpensive run that they had to pay for all year. Just running, I mean, they go all over, they have a schedule from week to week where they're gonna run it. So, and we haven't even, today I had two people call us already and pay for theirs off a credit card. The deadlines, uh, to get in the deal is December, but, or January the third, that'll give us nine days to make t-shirts, so we don't get too many t-shirts.
If the commission approved this, is January okay, first part of January, okay?
Yes, yes.
So, well, we have a motion, there are more discussion?
Have you, what cost-cutting measures have you done?
We got two people working, everybody's been laid off.
Everybody's been laid off?
Everybody but me and the groundskeeper. 'Cause I have to be there to run it, and the groundskeeper has to, there's a lot of things that needs to be done in the wintertime to keep the golf course, ready for the following season, to where when we first start, it's ready, and we ain't spending months getting it to look good. So, he's gotta be out there cutting trees, trimming trees, redoing some of the greens that might've got bad due to the snow that we've had.
Well, I make a motion that we give Spring Hill Golf Course a thousand dollars in January.
Second.
I do have one question, your budget says twenty-seven hundred dollars for taxes in January, what taxes do you have?
The taxes we pay every quarter, every three, every quarter we pay taxes, and that, that's your federal, social security, Kansas.
So payroll, payroll taxes.
Yeah, payroll taxes, yes. And, and that includes unemployment tax and all that also.
Taxes are as much as payroll?
Pre, it's quarterly.
Quarter, oh, okay.
Yeah, we pay that quarterly.
That makes sense. So, a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you guys so much, and I pray we don't have to come back.
Thanks for all the work you're doing. See no other visitors, moving on to consent agenda.
I so move, we approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll second. Do you have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries, moving on to old business.
Hold the public hearing regarding the proposed two thousand and eighteen amended budget. Good evening, uh, once again here talking about budget, the budget to process to amend, but this is the same process we need to go through to adopt the budget, which means we have to publish it, which we did, uh, December seventh, and at least ten days after that, we have to hold a public hearing to hear comments from the public prior to adopting it. The only fund we are amending this year is the water fund, and that is due to the timing of the final payments on the water treatment facility. We had originally budgeted that everything would have been paid and, uh, wrapped up in twenty seventeen, and it valid the first of this year, so. Need to hold the public hearing prior to adopting.
So I open the public hearing, uh, public budget hearing, any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And so now we move on to considering the ordinance. Do we have a motion, or do we have any other questions or comments?
I so move we amend. I, I so move we approve the ordinance to amend the specified funds in the budget for the city of Arkans City for the year beginning January first, twenty eighteen.
I'll second it.
So, motion and a second to approve the amended, the budget amendment to the specified funds, any other, any questions? Comments from the commission, seeing none, all, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Mary Kovich?
Yes. Moving on to new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city to accept the proposal from Lane Christensen Company of Wichita to rebuild the Mill Canal Primary Stormwater Pump for an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Good evening, I have pictures on the video for you, we also have Rusty Redding and Gail Ball here from Lane, if you have any questions about the quote. Mill Canal now originates at Chestnut Main Street and flows to the ADM, behind ADM Mill, and that's the levee for the Longmont River. Go back again. There's a large diameter pipe, you can see the top of the, the rail there, that flows under the levee, comes out on the riverside, and on the riverside, we have a large flat gate that when floodwaters comes up, it presses against the floodgate, keeps water from going through, coming back into the city, we also have a gate on top of the levee that we close. Once the gate is closed, water forms in the basin. We have two large pumps, you can see the vertical intakes on them, uh, one intake is lower in the basin, the other one's higher. The one lower in the basin's the primary pump, it's got a float valve, when water comes up in the basin, it turns the pump valve on. As it gets higher, the secondary one will come on. Next slide, this is the primary pump that we either have to get a new one or rebuild. It's Fairbank Morris, both of them were manufactured in nineteen thirty-six or nineteen thirty-eight, we can't really read the plate well, and as far as we know, they've never been touched since, rebuilt. Next slide. This is, uh, half of the control panel, electrical control panel that will need to be rebuilt, it's included in the proposal to rebuild that. This is a contractor, when we had the river flooding the last time, the contractor burned, you can see the burn marks on it, and Wade Magnus, uh, works for Tony, he, uh, took the one off the secondary and moved it over to the primary. Since, since then, we've got a new contact and put it in. Next one. This is the, the vertical inlet pumps. Go back. There's a trash rack, or a trash screen on the bottom in this bowl, just where the impeller is that pulls the water up, next slide. Go back one. It's hard to see. This is, connects here in the outlet pump that pumps water through the top of the levee. Next one. Okay, and then cascades down. And we have a video. It shows it, okay. According to Bob Frazee, our emergency, uh, management coordinator, he said one year a beaver was coming back up to the top, going down, cascading down to the bottom, coming back up.
We don't have that on video.
But you can see the force from the water.
So.
Going down it. So that's my show and tell.
Alright.
Oh, you said nineteen thirty-six, was it?
Nineteen thirty-six or nineteen thirty-eight. It was on the, it was on the, uh, packet, right?
Has it been refurnished since then?
No, not that we know of, we have no record of it, it just.
Where's that company?
Fairbanks Morris, they have a plant in Kansas City, and they would be the ones to, to rebuild the pump. We would do the primary first, and then the, the secondary later.
What's the recommendation?
To rebuild.
And so this is, uh, this is something we're doing, uh, this preventative maintenance, 'cause it still works as far as we know, it just may not, just may, we.
It works, but, you know, they're eighty-two years old, eighty or eighty-two, I don't know.
And when you need it, you wanna know for sure, that's what we're, okay.
Right, and, you know, to, to, uh, save lives and, and structures in the case of flooding. If the pumps go out, we don't have any way to get the water over the levee, other than we go rent pumps.
Sure, so the rest of the infrastructure, all the other pipes, they were in, fifty more?
Still replace the inlet pipes, um, they'll have to replace the roof, the roof they have to take off to lift the pumps out and put them back in, the roof we have now is probably wouldn't survive being pulled off and put back on, so the, uh, they're quoting includes a new roof to put on, it includes, uh, a crane to, uh, remove the roof and put it back on.
And that's pipe construction, empty pipe.
When will they be doing this?
Rest.
What was the question?
When will they be doing it, when, when do you plan on redoing it?
Well, as quick as we can move, because, uh, by April, we'd like to have it back in during the wet season, so we don't just have.
Yeah, before it rains, for sure, right?
Right.
And I might add, this price, when you look at it, includes the electrical for both pumps, some things we're doing ahead to, so the next time you do the secondary pump, it won't be near as expensive, because we're redoing the electrical all at once up front, um, instead of piecing it together for you, it just makes sense why the roof's off, to bring all that equipment in and do it one time the first time.
Are the same, the pumps the same on both, uh, inlets?
Yes, they are identical pumps.
So.
And we only wanna do one at a time in case we have a flooding.
And we will, a lot of, Mike will tell, uh, say this took me way too long to come up with, but there's a lot of moving parts here that we have to coordinate so we can have a pump back online within hours. So, if you had a flood event, you, you have some way to get rid of that water. So, it is a very coordinated effort by several contractors to come and do this with us, to make this all happen at the right time and fast enough to keep the city out of armed floods.
So the secondary pump, which is the one that's the, has the inlet, the higher up?
It's higher, right, yeah, they have the load valves.
And the, and they both were coordinating, so if you can't get the primary one, can the secondary one remove the water?
It will do the best it can, you, these are both, these are both eight thousand gallon pump, so I mean, they're moving a lot of water when, when you get a flood.
Some of it?
And, uh, so you'll have half, half of that capacity to take care of the, our pumps up, uh, and running.
How, how long do you expect it to take to, if we approve this to?
Well, I think it was sixteen to eighteen weeks on the rebuild, um.
Did I miss, did I miss seeing that, I probably looked over.
I think she says ten to twelve weeks lead time on the parish.
Okay, okay, and I'm figuring sixteen weeks time, we pull it, get a reset, they get it, they pull it, we get it, all that stuff. So, I'm saying, my timeframe's sixteen to eighteen weeks per minute.
So, and what prompted us to look at this, is?
Just the age of the, age of the pumps, and we've had it in the budget, we've got it in the budget.
Okay.
To replace the, the primary and next to the secondary.
Sixteen weeks, that's pretty much.
Are there other co, other contractors that do the same work, or how do we?
We went with Lane because they're associated with Fairbanks Ma, Morris, the ones that manufactured the pump, and they have plants in Kansas City. And we also loo, use Lane for our water,
Right, yeah, I know we're using.
Water well pumps to them.
Okay.
Also, on the second one, we just, uh, did an update on our hazard mitigation plan, and, uh, we put in there, one of the mitigation items is the second pump, so we might be able to get a, hopefully get a grant to help pay for the second pump.
Okay.
There are a lot of cities that still have pumps these ages and just a little bit newer in the forties and.
You know Rusty?
Yeah.
There, there is some, but it's pretty rare to have a pump last eighty-two years. It's been very good to you. Uh, city of Wichita has large pumps like this that we, we pull and refurbish as well, um, so it's not uncommon to have to refurbish these older pumps.
After all the floods we've had here, those pumps have really performed well, and I think it's very important that we remain proactive in our equipment and not be forced to replace something out of immediate necessity.
You can't afford, you can't deal with an emergency, you need to be proactive, um, the damage will be too quick and too fast, so.
Well, do you have a motion or any other discussion?
Did you talk to any other companies and get bids from anybody else?
We went with Lane.
Okay.
Mayor, consider relish, resolution authorizing the city of Arkans City to accept a proposal from Lane Christensen Company of Wichita to rebuild the Mill Canal Primary Stormwater Pump for an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
I'll second that.
Is this something that needs to be decided tonight?
Not necessarily, no.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, it did wait, I think the bid's good for, hmm, thirty days.
Does any? Mm-hmm.
So we could get.
Well, that's, set us back another thirty days if we.
It'd be the eighth, January eighth.
Yeah, but then they won't be able to.
Commissioner Warren might want to speak on it too, don't know.
Al, did you have something you wanna say about this, or?
Well, there are other manufacturers, and I think that this amount of money for a quarter of a million dollar, you gotta take a look, or at least get another thought.
So do I get risk.
This might be a mortal price, it's a great timeframe, but you really don't know, you have no comparator. And Fairbanks Morris is great, but there's a lot of other manufacturers that make, uh, this type of pump.
Did we look into anything like that?
Can they rebuild, build this kind of pu, pump?
If it's this old, I don't know if you wanna rebuild, I don't know what the case is like, and they really, they really won't know until they pull it out and look at the case. If the case has problems, which it could very well have after this amount of years, so we're not just talking about shaft and impeller, and motor cup, we're talking about what would you have.
Rust, Rusty, is that your name, Rusty?
Yes, sir.
Have, have you been down to look at the, the pump?
Multiple, multiple times.
Okay, what is your opinion of that pump, I mean?
I think it's probably gonna be rebuilt, um, uh, you know.
It's, it's right at the top of the, in the, in the building, right?
No, the pump actually sits down clear in the hole, so.
Down in the hole?
Yeah, it, the pump is the bottom, most bottom part of, of that structure.
Okay.
But you have the pipe that comes up and then connects to the motor or the driver,
Okay.
which spins the propeller, or the shaft that makes the, the impeller, uh, suck up the water.
Okay.
And that, that, there's an inner column also that's loaded with oil and another column pipe in there that keeps that from rusting and
Okay.
all that sort of thing, so, this is, again, something we do all the time. I caution you timeframe-wise, and I'm not trying to do anything, you, you're the city.
Well, I, I thought about that too, sixteen weeks is.
Yeah, so you're pushing, and, and I'm sorry about that, but, but, uh, just leave it at that, so.
Is there a chance though, once you get down there and pull that, that it's gonna have to be replaced?
It could happen.
Okay.
I'm not saying it can't, um, I, you know, uh, I had a Fairbanks Morris representative come out, and we went down into the hole and looked at it.
That's the original manufacturer, right?
Yes, and him and I feel pretty comfortable, you know, it can be rebuilt, but again, this element is absolutely correct, that until we pull that thing completely apart and look at the inside of it, we don't know.
Right, okay.
In a new one, if you look on the new replacement quote, there's a twenty-six to twenty-eight week lead time on those.
Yeah, so.
If they have to.
But again, you won't.
But then you'd know, if it was a new one, it'd be, you'd put it in and it'd be.
But until you pull it out, you don't know.
Yeah.
That's correct, and we're trying to set, the recommendation of the, the, of the rebuild is a cost-saving measure, uh, for you guys, because a new one is so expensive, and it's a drastic design, and, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, the things that are made today do not have the iron, the, the rigidity,
The strength, the durability.
All those things, when our grandfathers built something, they built something. And, uh, I'll be honest with you, to think that a new pump would give you a life like that is, I just don't think it would ever happen.
It's not gonna happen.
How many hours of lead time on those pumps do you have?
I don't know off my head.
Can you, is there any way you can check that?
Nineteen thirty-six or nineteen thirty-nine, maybe it was.
Yeah, I don't know if there's an hour meter on it.
Meter on them, right?
I think there's an hour meter, but whether they're functioning or have, I don't.
Well, I think we come down to the question of, do we need a second pinia, or a second quote, or do we go with the first one we have here?
Well, for eight thousand GPM, and I don't know, can they both run simultaneously, is there two discharges, or are they?
They could run simultaneously.
Okay, so you have two pumps, you've got eight thousand always there, pull one or have one. Sixteen thousand, I don't know, but, uh, without looking at the run, you're just running out, they have none, they don't alternate. So the only way you'd know is to check the hour, be on the secondary pump, to know how often it's ever needed. 'Cause if it's real low runtime, it may just be test run, or it may actually be overflow condition. So, thinking that you're taking a big chance by only having one pump, it's always better to have two, that's granted. I don't know what the failure condition, I don't know, I can't believe motors will last that long, and that motor case and the way the shield on it didn't, I think that's a little bit. I don't know what the failure condition, I don't know, I can't believe motors will last that damn long. And that motor case and the way the shield on it didn't, I think that's a little bit more motor. I don't top the pumps at all, I don't top that at all.
Those are original, not-
They're original motors? You don't think they're gonna rewind?
Yeah. No, sir.
Or no, no bearings on it?
No.
No, okay, they're original, that's a good point.
Taking time.
Wow.
Hmm.
Variable run times, they're not used one that much. So I mean, just the thought of having another look at, and these might be the best, they're, obviously they're a good pump, I mean, no, there's no question of that. But just have one bid, I think it's just, nothing wrong with Lane Lister or Lane Christian now.
Lane is their specialty. We use them for the well fill. They give us great products and support. Um-
Who's? Who else would you go to? I mean, what?
I don't know.
Do we have anybody? I, I'm getting into you guys' business now, but are there other companies close? They're in Wichita. Are there any other, is there any, who else is close?
There, well, you talk about, uh, you talk about folks that can do the work or supply that. There is other manufacturers, one's in California. Um, I'm trying to think if I know of another, but th- there's just not a lot of people that make these huge eight thousand gallon minute pump ends and specialize in rebuilding or, or providing new.
Yeah.
It just doesn't happen. So, uh, you know, to think about the process and the hours, you know, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of things that have gone into this. I am trying to use local labor. Um, Pike will be involved. Um, we're switching our way, we, we presented with, uh, square D, uh, controls and we, we're asked to go back and use Cutler Hammer. We're trying to get that price as we speak. We expect that price to be slightly lower, so that'll be a deduct when we get that price. Um, so we, we do our best to involve your community when we do this kind of work, so that, uh, they're paying taxes here and we get that, so.
Right, and I think our concern is just to be able to say, look, we did our due diligence, we've, we've checked and this is the best use of the tax dollar.
I understand. I understand.
Um, is that going to be an issue if we tabled it for the next commission meeting?
Is that a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we-
We have to get a vote.
Find out who else.
I'm sorry?
We do have a motion that-
We have a motion on the floor.
Neither has to be withdrawn, or we'd have to-
Vote on it.
Vote on it and have it go down.
Oh, I didn't hear. We have a motion in a second?
Oh, yeah, we do, yeah.
Yeah.
Karen made a motion and, and, uh, well, Dwayne seconded it. So we do have that. And, so now we're discussing it, so.
Yeah, so now we're discussing it.
Um, so, any-
If you find out, there's another firm that's associated with Fairbanks Morris.
What's that?
Pike.
Well-
I mean, if they're the manufacturers, they're the only one that builds it. They probably have multiple people that they work with, I would-
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you go with a different company, you're gonna end up with whole new, whole, whole new piping?
Maybe.
Don't know.
Well, approximately forty-three thousand is the labor portion of this contract. Everything else is materials or subcontractors on this. Cause you have crane rental, it's four days of crane rental, so it's sixteen thousand for crane rental from Pike. Forty-four thousand is the direct, the, the cost they receive from the electrical contractor for that work and for the equipment, uh, which is pretty substantial. And actually, Westar has some major modifications they have to make on their end too, which is, it is not, is not anything that we have to pay for, thankfully. Uh, then the roof, you know, is, is something that we can then remove it and replace, so that's a one-time cost. The forty-four is a one-time cost. The actual rebuild of the pump is seventy-eight, nine, seventy-five. And then there's mistch- miscellaneous, um, materials, and there's estimated repairs to the motor, and those are estimated. It may be less than that, you know? And so, um, those are just ballpark estimates, same with estimated freight. And that's why it's a do not exceed number, to just try to give us enough cushion to ensure that it's gonna be, um, within that range and, and not exceed it. So, well, as far as the labor portion of it, and, and like you said, there is a lot of coordination involved. It's about forty-three thousand dollars.
Well, we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Um, would, in the event that we held that off for another commission meeting, which is, uh-
January seventh.
January seventh, were you planning to start in the next, between now and then, over the holidays?
We would be scheduled by January seventh. I can't say that we would be in here working, but, you know,
Right. Just getting everything kind of lined out.
Us and Fairbanks would be starting to roll, okay?
Any other questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider approval of personnel policy updates. I guess I read that, sorry.
Go, Martha.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. These are relatively simple housekeeping-type changes to personnel policies. The first one is the employee council. You'll also note that I did provide a markup version for you to review, thinking that that might be a little bit easier for you to follow as to the changes that were actually made to the document. For the, uh, personnel policy on employee council, we added a statement emphasizing the importance of employee representatives being involved in council activities. We also reflected the new makeup of public works with sanitation and street and stormwater being represented on the council. Changed the meeting date from the policy saying Thursday to Tuesday, and then also talked about having the necessity for a quorum to hold the meeting. Those were all of the changes in that particular policy. Then we just had one small change for clarification on the safety footwear policy. Just clarifying that employees will be responsible for the purchase of required safety footwear, but then they will be eligible for the reimbursement that we have already approved in the past. So it's relatively straightforward.
Okay, we have an item here on the floor. I need a motion to prove that, or we can move on.
Let me find it here. I assume we approve the personal policy updates as presented or printed.
Sorry. Is it?
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other questions? Comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number three.
Consider a resolution approving the purchase of equipment from Sparks Music Arkansas City for the south portion of the agribusiness building for an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
As the commissioners are aware, we've been doing quite a bit of work and, and they're actually, uh, doing the floor right now, uh, putting in the new tennis flooring. They should probably be done with that Friday is when they'll be done with the floor. Uh, it's, it's making, uh, quite a significant change, um, in that facility. One of the items that we have talked about or discussed and, and is the utilization and, of sound equipment in there. We have a lot of our vendors that, uh, and nonprofits and groups, uh, that, uh, actually bring in their own sound equipment and rent that sound equipment. And it can be quite costly for those groups to do that. Um, I think I remember one time, and I don't quote me a hundred percent, but I think NRA at one, one time was charged like fifteen hundred dollars, um, for utilization of sound equipment, just for the rental of that equipment. We could provide it, i- if installed substantially less, but it could also be used for other nonprofit groups for announcements. One of the things we did notice with the Christmas party is that the sound reflectivity in the, in that room is so bad now, um, that we need to make sure that we design it properly and install sound equipment that meets the needs of the facility and for the users of the facility. And so we had actually three different companies come in, um, look at the facility as far as designing it, from speaker layout, heights, and from an engineering capacity to try to determine what would be the best method, uh, to provide, um, a good sound quality in there at the, at the lowest cost. And what we found was, um, it'll be a JBL type system. Uh, actually, they've been in contact directly with the manufacturers. Uh, this is pri- uh, they're giving us their early two thousand eighteen pricing, uh, cause they're seeing pretty significant increases. They've already done one, uh, this year, and they're doing another one, um, at the beginning of nineteen. Um, so we're locked into the eighteen prices, which is, which is good for us. And they would, uh, go in, install it, uh, probably within the next few weeks and have it complete. And then that facility would be ready for just about any and every function that you can imagine in there, without, um, individuals having to bring in their own sound equipment, uh, set it up, um, and then try to figure out what the best way to, to, to do that would be. We would potentially charge a little bit for utilization, because we'd probably provide an employee to be there, uh, to monitor the sound equipment, make sure it's working properly and set up properly, um, which will help us recoup a little bit of that cost. But it's really more about the, uh, uh, long-term utilization of that facility.
Uh, I had a question. I'm not a sound person, so I have no clue what a lot of these are. But, uh, I do know when it says speakers, uh, are they, since the tennis association uses that, is there a way to protect those speakers?
These, these are outdoor, um, heavy-duty in case speakers, so they're not an indoor flimsy type speaker. And they'll actually be securely mounted to the beams directly, and so there'll be little to no give on, on these speakers whatsoever. Uh, so the likelihood of damaging is pretty minimal to none.
Uh, I mean, I used to be a kid and there's something there to hit with a tennis ball, I'd try-
I'd be more worried about the fans than I would be about them speakers.
Well, probably both of them. So, I just kinda wondered, uh, what kind they were, if they were heavy-duty, which sounds like they are.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
And this would, oh, are you, did you finish?
Uh, no, I'm just thinking, go ahead.
Okay. And this would come out of the Parks Facility?
Yes.
Parks and Facilities budget?
That's correct.
And, and I guess, we didn't, we hadn't planned on this expenditure.
No, but-
How's that working out, I guess? What I'm, my question is, how do we?
We have funds available, um, uh, so we should be okay, um, with the purchase of it and still be able to, um-
Is there something we didn't do that we had planned?
There's a lot of stuff we didn't do. One of the things is, uh, when we budget every year, we do put a little bit extra money into salaries and benefits. So there's always a little bit of cushion there. Plus, we have a three hundred thousand dollar emergency reserve, um, that's always in there as well. So, um, there is a little flexibility every year in the budget. And given this expense, this would complete really the remodel and we'd be done with the south portion of the Ag Building and the utilization's gonna go through the roof, um, we've had, uh-
We hope not, we just fixed that roof.
Do we now?
Sure hope not.
Oh, I know, not through the roof. Uh, we are, um, we are charging for utilization of, or use of the facility, um, and we are, and they're paying, and so, which is good.
Well, it's a very nice facility now.
It's a recent event, yeah.
It's really nice now.
We could see his lips moving, but we couldn't hear a word of saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's what really brought it to light. We were already working on it, and I was gonna just hold on to it, but then once we finally realized how bad it really is in there, it just-
People were receiving pins and we didn't know it.
The huge difference.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did, I, I was listening to you, but I missed, he, you said they would be able to get in, started on it?
Next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks?
They would order the material.
After fir- first of the year.
I'd actually, yeah, I'd, well, if he can get the material in next week, he'd probably do it next week. And so if it's approved, I'll actually contact him after the meeting, have him go ahead and get it ordered and on the way. Some of this equipment already has. And so he'll just be waiting on, uh, speakers mainly, and some amplifiers.
The Earth was talking earlier about this. You were talking earlier about all these, all this, this s- sound system? What was your comment?
Oh, I just seem like it was, you know, a whole bunch of money, but, I mean, that's just, that's the Sparks way.
Are you, are you put sound attenuators in also?
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about. You don't put any, you don't put any sound dampening in there. You don't care what sound system it is, it's gonna sound like crap. I mean, you, you like, you know, you don't have any, it's kinda like, you, you're going to Brahms. And you notice all that, when you first open it, it's so noisy in there, and then they put those panels up. You see them up on the ceiling, they look like that weird foam stuff. That, that cuts down noise. Have they put any of that in, or what?
Not as part of this project, no. It was designed with the reflectivity that is, exists now with the metal. That's why they're down pendants. And that's why I take in consideration, they took in consideration the roof pitch, and so it should sound exactly the same at-
Well, the floor turned up a little bit since it's somewhat absorbent.
Correct. I mean, if it gets to be a long-term problem, we can always look at putting those sand dampening panels. We looked at those, those tech panels.
You could put sound dampeners in first. It might change the entire scope of what's needed for sound. If he, if he's fighting the echo or the sound reflection, jetting panels will eliminate that, you might-
We did look at pricing those panels and they were actually quite expensive. They're about half the cost of this. And you'd still potentially would have to do this on top of that.
So fifteen grand would sound a panel, the whole thing?
It'd be print that fifteen, twenty thousand by the time you buy them, cause they're about five dollars a square foot.
If you don't do the whole thing, you still have to panel.
You have to have enough though to reduce that reflectivity in the facility, and it would be in panels. There's a lot of square footage in the building. That's our problem, uh, with that building, it's just so big.
I'm only, I'm only, I, I, of course, I can't see the details of the quote, and, you know, but, I mean, we're talking like speaker clusters, or we're talking?
Well, I'm sure the quotes are fact, I'm sure of that.
No, the, the speakers are actually, it's a five rows of four speakers, so there'll be four speakers on each beam, equally placed in, in that system. The two subwoofers will be in the center roof, pointed down.
What do they do for a sound system now?
You bring in your own.
There's nothing there.
What's wrong with that?
It was a problem. We, we, uh-
We couldn't, we couldn't hear it.
With the metal.
Well, we didn't bring a sound system, or we did?
We did. We brought in a sound system and it-
But because it was so reflective. So for fifteen grand, everybody's bringing their own sound system, you save fifteen thousand.
But the sound system that we must have, there was no reflection. It was just for the immediate area.
Well-
But it worked, it worked before. Before you panned it, you had, and didn't have the, uh, uh-
No.
Yeah.
It, it didn't work very well last year.
It worked better, yes.
It worked. So if you covered it at the echo or the sound reflection attenuated the sound, then you don't have a sound system, yeah? Right?
Well, you don't have one, then every group would have to bring in their own.
What, 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 what did we bring for our, or what did you bring for your Christmas event?
We brought our own.
Well, then you had your own.
Not with the building.
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't wanna supply a sound system for a bit of walk-in there, would you?
No, it-
It's optional, that's what I'd be saying, that they could rent it and, and, and think-
It'd be something people could rent, it's, yeah, and it'd be mounted.
You're providing like a rent to individuals?
Well-
Be mounted, sound system that events could use, mounted on the ceiling.
It'd be an additional cost.
Uh, we're, uh, then we'll have, somebody has to run to keep them from blowing it up.
Correct. Well, it's designed not to be blown up though either.
That's what-
That'd be part of what they're paying for, just have somebody go help them get it set up and tear it down.
Yeah, and it's a, it's an electronic amplifier and everything, and there's always certain levels that we can get into to adjust the, the levels, so you'd have to get tech.
So there'd like, there'd be a panel on the wall where they can just come up and plug it back on in?
Hasn't it not? No. It's gonna be in a locked closet that we have built out there. All the electrical room and everything's locked up and secure now.
No. No.
And so this is already, would be in a portion of that, uh, closet area.
So we're gonna supply a sound man with this?
If they rented it, yes. We would have someone on hand, um, to monitor the sound system.
How often do you think this will get rented?
Hopefully, quite a bit.
At the renovations are just absolutely stunning.
I understand, I understand that, but how much do you rent your sound system for now?
We don't rent our sound system. They go out and get their own typically. It's what they've done in the past.
So we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars, hopefully somebody will come and rent our sound system for whatever price it'll pay back.
It's probably not gonna make money.
It's probably not gonna make money.
Plan to opt-
No, why not?
Spend a fif- send, spend fifteen grand and make it where it's, you have a sound system already, but you could rent it if you should, so you know, they can bring their own and theirs will work just fine.
That's a good thought, I don't know, we can-
And plus, sound attenuation is moving parts, so it's forever and doesn't become obsolete.
That's true.
Your sound system has moving parts, subjected to all kinds of everything plus the obsolescence.
Good point, thank you. And Wes have any comments or?
Nothing to surprise, it might be a fabulous prize.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I have no idea, I have no idea about that kind of high equipment cost, so it's gotta be-
I'd say-
It's a good idea.
And you gotta buy good stuff, I'm looking for good stuff like that.
Yeah, you gotta buy good stuff.
I will, even when I, we were, when I saw it or thought of it, I mean, that was my first thought, is you you can't get rid of an echo by adding more noise, even if there's pointed the right direction.
Well.
I mean, and you see every gym, every place, they have a lot of sound, you gotta put sound panels in.
Yeah, I I know another company that will quote this out too, it's um Cory, I know Sparks is local, but I know a company that does skating rinks. If you wanna ever know something about noise attenuation, try blasting down on a concrete floor.
Well, so that's that's a, that's a different subject, uh the cost of the equipment versus, yeah, doing something with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to give them this advice?
Yeah. Cause they use that.
Yeah. So we either need a motion or we could put it on next week's agenda or next meeting.
I don't mean a problem.
Can, can you find, see if what, another? I mean, we're we're getting into deal here.
Get enough fit.
I I don't, I don't wanna go with anyone else, I'd much rather stay in Arc City.
He'll come and fix it.
He he's always been here for everything we've ever needed on movies, return done.
Yeah, well, can you have him come to the meetings so we can say, we can answer, will that really work, I mean, or is there gonna be-
Yeah.
Oh, he's, like I said, we had three sound engineers in here already. They actually brought the gentleman from JBL, was in our facility two times. And they did the reflectivity, they did the sound testing in there and took all that in consideration, given the design of the building, they have full layout, he's got the full diagrams of it, um-
Here's my thought is still, even if you-
It was in that packet, I believe.
People are just in there cheering or something, playing tennis, there's still gonna be all kinds of echo.
Uh, diagrams? I I didn't see any diagrams.
Guess we'll fix that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's always gonna be some echo, I don't think you're ever gonna get rid of the echo.
That'll building, you ain't gonna get rid of a lot of attenuation.
Yeah.
Well, staff strongly recommends that the commission fund this final improvement of the Ag building in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven thirty.
You wanna make a motion?
Yes. I make a motion, we approve the purchase of the equipment from Sparks Music, Arc City, for the south portion of the Ag building in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven thirty.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and we've had quite a bit of discussion, but any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, aye, motion carries. I'd like us to look into sound attenuation also, or sound dampening, I mean, I think that's-
I have, I have some quotes for that, I have to go back.
That may be more important than a sound system.
And and see, um, well, I now have quotes of the material, I have I have architectural quotes of what it'd be potentially.
I mean, we're talking about doing basketball in there, if it's if it's that much echo, one whistle and everybody's ears are boom. I mean, that's a, especially, yeah, it'd be crazy.
Thanks, Coach.
Num- number four.
Oh.
Consider first reading of ordinance adopting an electric franchise with Westar Energy.
Well, it's continuation of a discussion we had um last commission meeting. I did get ahold of Westar and asked, um, well, I did state to them that that twenty-year was an item that was really of concern with us, was there any possibility to do less than twenty-year, and they said yes. But they'd have to bring it up to corporate to have it approved. So if we make a proposal and they and approve it this evening, he'll he'll actually run it up the chain and get it approved for us.
And if we do that and they come back and say no.
I highly doubt they'll say no.
Yeah.
Well, we hope they don't.
I don't think they will.
We can say, fine, you can't use our right of way.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a pass-through, so.
Well, well, yeah, I mean, but they if they don't, they want, as opposed to twenty-year to ten-year, you know, it's, I don't know what difference it makes.
I don't think it'll be a deal killer for them by any means.
Okay. And we, we are.
So what we need to fill in-
We're currently, we're currently at five percent.
We need to s- fill in section five, percentage.
And length of term.
And the, and section ten.
And what we're gonna use it for.
Well, it's already, what we have now is already in use.
It's five percent. Well, I've thought long and hard about this, and so I will, uh I just I don't, I don't feel right about adding another tax. And that's what it is, and uh-
Where?
And so, and I know we don't have dedicated s- funding for streets, but I think there's money there that we can, we can find. Um, so-
Where where would that be?
Well, we found money for Ag buildings and as soon as we get our hospital figured out, there's gonna be some money coming back.
How much?
I mean, that's been a big drain, I mean, if you just think about the hospital as a drain of a million dollars for a couple of ye- you know, over a couple of year period and if that goes away, then there's more money in the city to do other projects that we didn't have because we were doing that. Uh, and that was non-budgeted items for that, when we-
We have, we have uh have taken money from other accounts in the, in the city.
Do you want now?
We, they have used money in the past out of water fund, street fund, is that what you're saying?
We still do.
Still do, but for just regular general fund items.
Yes, we do.
So, and we use those, that money for whatever?
General governmental, it's just, it's offsetting, because we, so much of our-
General government. Like salaries and stuff?
So much of our work that we do, um, is utility-related work such as like Kathy, myself, um, several other individuals. And so there is a cost associated with doing that work, also printing costs, postal, so there's a lot of costs that are not directly in the utility funds that are, are in administrative nature, and so that's the reason for transfers. Plus it also helps keep property tax lower.
So, anyway, but here's my thought with it, I'd like us, I was thinking we leave it the same for five years. And that puts a pressure on the city commissioner, the next one, to do something even better with the hospital so that if if there are sales tax dollars that can someday be recuperated, that that could go sort of streets. And we don't just say the, spending money on all these things is good enough as is, we need to look for ways to to-
Finance another way?
Yeah, we need to look for better ways to to finance things. Instead of just continuing to go with the status quo, we already went with status quo of a quote unlimited sales tax, but I'd like us to try our best to make it as limited as possible.
Well, I just know that's citizens' concerns are strong with the street.
And to-
Yeah.
On the sides and I've, I know we have so many budgeted for some of that, but I, we, I feel like we need to build a fund.
Here's the thing though too, if if the commission wants to do five years, I'll, and I'll present it, no problem. When you look at the amount of money that one percent res- receives in, it it's basically the equivalent to about one tenth of one percent of a sales tax, when you look at from that dollar amount. And so, cause it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we get about one point six million a year in sales tax for one percent. So when you look at there, it's it's right around roughly one tenth of of one percent. So i- if that's something the commission wants to look at, years from now, take up, you know, you can look at that later. Um, you have options if you don't go with with this. And it is a direct pass-through, and so, and I think everyone understands that, that it is a pass-through. Uh, you know, it'd be a mu- much different story if they just built it into their rate structure, that's what Winfield does, they build that into their rate structure. And so you never see that as being a a a franchise fee on their bill. You know, but Westar does not do it that way, uh they actually put it on there as a franchise fee. Uh, so that is where we kind of get, um, you know, it's a lot more noticeable to the the general public for sure.
But Winfield owns their utilities, I mean, they have a lot of-
They own their utility, but they also charge themselves a franchise fee too. But they charge it on all utilities ex- with the exception of one, and I don't remember which utility. So they charge, I think, waters, sewer, sanitation, they charge themselves a franchise fee, charge themselves, you know, gas and electric.
Cause they also have to maintain all that stuff and keep it going, yeah.
Correct, right.
Well, we need, we do need a motion. If we don't hear none, I I move we-
We're bad, okay, go ahead.
I move we adopt an ordinance, just, uh, for five-year, five percent franchise fee with Westar Energy.
I'll second that.
Question. If we don't approve that and then we table the ordinance, what does that, where's that put us with Westar?
If you table it, they actually said that we just continue on our existing franchise agreement.
So can we, if we come up with something later on?
Unless you approve the agreement this evening, if you approve this evening, then I'll take action because the the commission took action. I'll proceed with the five-year, five percent because that's what was approved by the commission.
And he's asking if, can we change it later?
If we, and that's voted down and we do nothing, then-
Yeah, so table it.
Can you change it later?
I mean, like, next month?
Oh.
E- even though this is is expiring, will it continue or what?
So our our existing agreement continues until you take some sort of action, if if that's what you're saying.
Uh-huh.
Till the commission takes action, we're basically grandfathered underneath the existing agreement, that's the email I received from, or a conversation I had on the phone. It was not an email, it's a conversation on the phone that I had with him, that they'd be wanting to continue with the current agreement.
I talked to Kathy last week about other places that we could use funds out of, that wouldn't affect that fund. I don't know if you looked, d- do you remember that? We were talking about instead of the franchise fee. Did you do any more investigating or looking into like how much of a, say, just say s- uh sanitation, how much of that
Mm-hmm.
we could use without affecting that fund to work on, say, the sanitation or wastewater?
Street.
And take some of that money, put it into fund to work on streets.
Your utility funds need to be used for utili- the specific utilities as general.
Right, so that, that's why I'm, that's what, that's my question then.
And then you talked about special highway fund.
Uh, well-
But I thought we talked about revenue sources in general.
Uh, well, that, I guess I didn't express it too clearly, that if we take it, those utility funds are for those utilities. And that's where I don't wanna take it out of, I don't wanna take it out of water fund. And 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 you can't, okay, so where would we come up with some money?
Well, you can't, you can't say you can't, you can't.
You can transfer, you can transfer to the general fund.
You can transfer to the general fund.
Well, that's what I mean, what, if you start transferring, you're gonna take away from projects that need to be done that have been put on hold for so many years that we put them on hold again.
You have to responsibly make transfers that are responsible.
So, and we could have crazy wild streets or we find some way to to fund them.
Truly, the only way to to really fund streets is property tax or sales tax. Those are, and gas tax, which which is set by population. And so those are really the truly, the only three responsible avenues to fund street improvements.
I'd say I agree with that.
That's irresponsible, there may, there's other ways you can do it.
Can we, can we get money? Can we get money off the gas?
Yeah, about three-
There's a special highway fund.
Special highway fund, and it's based, calculation based on population. And then, um, we also get a a portion that's county-wide, we get some of that back, I believe it's three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year is what we receive in gas tax. But it's based on population, so as our population goes down or it gets less, and so that's why the census is so critical. And it it will be very critical for us is to really truly capture those dollars.
And, and to do a mile a street with mill and overlay, like we did on Summit Street. That was what, one mile?
Million.
Yeah, about a million of miles, what you can anticipate, yeah.
About a million dollars a mile? So, we get three hundred fifty thousand dollars, it'll take us three years to build up enough money to do a mile.
But that, the thing is with that three hundred fifty thousand, you don't do anything else.
Yeah.
I mean, you do nothing.
So, I mean, that, you take all that money.
But but then, but but that million's also based on the standard street size. And when you look at like Summit Street, it's basically like two streets and one, because it's so wide. And so you have to take that in consideration, there's actually added cost because of the width of of the, of the road. Now, if you're doing a, well, no, Second Street's a bad example too, cause it's a really wide street and, but we don't have a lot of narrow streets in town. I hate saying that, all the streets are so darn wide.
First street. First street.
Yeah.
If if we start taking the money out of that special street fund, then, and we use that to repair s- other streets, right?
We use it for road pro- we do use it for road projects and, and we use it for everything.
For it at all? Yeah.
Matches everything.
So-
The bridges, the, you know, the mill or, you know.
If we s- start saving money, how, I mean, how long would it take us to build up enough money to re- to actually do a mill and overlay for like from Kansas to Radio Lane?
If you were able to save, well, it would probably take you ten, fifteen years.
That's what I thought, it'd take a while. And I, I mean, would still take some time for that hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, but
Absolutely.
But it it'd build it up quicker, that way, instead of-
But you do not have to take action this evening on this, like I said, they will, but if you decide to, that's fine, I'll relay it back to Westar, say five percent for five years and we'll visit it in five years.
So you do have a motion and a second, a part of the reason I don't think I wanna, I I wouldn't like to increase it right now is that sometimes I think as a government, we think if we, uh, and you know, it even happened with the ho- with the hospital here and I pushed for that tax, but you know, we get into a thing and then we just think, we'll just, we'll charge more rather than try to, try to fix it and make it better. We'll just, we'll raise this fee, we'll raise that, and uh I think we can find another way and we've been, and I'll say we've even been blessed with so many of our streets projects where where our money went a lot longer matched by federal or Kansas dollars and and we've just, things have been good for us because of that, I mean, we've gotten a huge-
A lot of that was because of that street sales tax, so we accumulate those funds.
Yeah, we accumulated some money.
And then that allowed us to leverage a much larger-
But I'm gonna ca- count on more of that and this will put pressure on us to really get a good refinance on those bonds and get, uh, make sure we get the hospital going so that it's not a drain, I mean, that's a lot of, if you think, we were-
That's a lot of money at the hospital.
It was two point four million, starting in January, it's gonna be what, one point eight million from the citizens going toward the hospital.
Yep, two, two years of sales tax would pay for total reconstruction, not mill and overlay, total reconstruction from Kansas Avenue to Radio Lane.
And, and so, we just need to keep the pressure on ourselves, that's why I think we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't pass this on to Westar customers.
Two years.
But, so-
What are unincorporated areas due?
Excuse me?
What are unincorporated areas due for franchise tax?
I don't know. Do unincorporated areas have franchise tax?
I don't know now. Can tell you.
County.
So, and that is another thing, we're competing against not just Winfield, but we're competing, our biggest competitor for census is not Parkerfield, I mean, it's not Winfield, it's Parkerfield. And so that'd be another thing that we have to consider.
Are they on Westar, are they on?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're on Westar. And they probably have zero franchise fee.
We're not, it's under talent electric.
No, I've checked, oh.
So, anyway, we do have a motion, it's a roll call vote, and do we have any other discussion though? Five percent for five years is the roll call vote, huh, yeah.
Commissioner Eastman?
No.
Commissioner Gainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
No.
Mary Boovich?
Yes. Yes, but the motion fails.
I move we table the ordinance for further consideration.
I second.
The motion to table in a second. I guess any other discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, do you need roll call?
No, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, aye.
Aye.
But you just tabled the motion.
Yeah, we just tabled it anyway, it doesn't matter, we don't really need a motion to table, we can come back, and anyway, and also, you can put something on his new business anytime.
Yeah.
So, all right, the motion doesn't carry, but it'll be coming back, I'm sure, so, um, all right, we're, city manager updates.
Uh, we're gonna be closed Christmas Day and Christmas Eve, um, also, we're gonna be closed just New Year's Day, so we'll be open on thirty first, uh, we'll not be open on the first. City Commission reorganization's on the seventh of January, so we'll, we'll do that right away, and then the, we're working on the test association rental contract, Tamara's been working on that. It may end up having to be an interlocal agreement, since we have multiple entities involved with school district, rec commission, Cali College and ourselves, so it may end up turning into. Interlocal agreement, which may take substantially longer to get approved through all the parties, so with that being said, I'll probably have another meeting with those folks, just to go over the proposed interlocal agreement before we bring it back to the commission. So, we're working on it, it's just not quite, um, done, we're, we'll make sure to get it in the proper format, uh, for approval. Uh, also in your package, you have the if I were mayor contest, uh, essays, we actually did that last week, great turnout. I'd still like to do something with the homeschool and uh Christian schools this spring, if we can, I just need to know how to do it, how to contact them, so. I'm gonna rely on you, Mr. Mayor and 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 Canyon to try to help, help navigate, um, uh, get them an essay contest similar to what the middle school does and. And do a day for them as well, so, uh, just need to, uh, coordinate that with with everyone, other than that, that's all I have for this evening.
And then, the if I were mayor, that's seventh graders?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Who's the fourth floor, we have to work on Monday.
The thirty first?
No, I mean, Christmas on Tuesday, right?
Yeah, we're off on Christmas Eve, I I stayed a day, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Oh, okay, so. If you're off on Christmas Eve, I invite everybody to come over to my office, we'll play front step bingo.
All, all your emergency services.
Front step tango, it must be cold.
All your emergency services will be working.
Well, what I'm thinking is the number of people that come up and try to get in on every time you take a day off, I'll sit in my office and watch them, I'm literally, we'll start, you wanna play a play set? Are they gonna go, are they gonna, I've had people walk all the way back down, walk like, all the way back and shut the door again.
All right, go ahead, state your name and address, we didn't do that today, no.
Um, Malkun, citizen, Arc City, Kansas, five hundred like Kansas Avenue, uh, uh, on the, the music, or the the uh, using Sparks Music, which is fine. The same as maybe the ones who's local contractors, but the thing, on the Fairfax Morris Park, I'm kind of incensed that that local contractor department asked to look at it. We do that kind of work, well, specialized by any way, but we did do a five thousand gallon per minute Fairfax Morris pump for the, for the old water plant.
Okay.
And so we changed out, we didn't use a Ford Fairfax Morris, cause I could get, I used a Roar pump, which I bought for substantially less money. That five thousand gallon pump, now you did buy a motor, but it was only thirty-five thousand dollars. And so this is a similar application, so I'm kind of incensed that we didn't look at something else or go further before we spent out the quarter of a million dollars. Now, if you look at his labor rates, and nothing wrong with this company, uh, Lane Christian, famous company, uh, used to be, when I worked with them, they were, they were Lane Wester. And I've known him for years, but but if you look at their rates as as if they didn't have a competitor, when they're spending labor, just for labors, ten thousand dollars a day. And, and 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 I'm kind of, you know, we got a forty-four thousand dollar pump, which might be a great price, might be one, we got a, a a, or seventy, seventy-eight thousand dollar pump, it might be a great price, a forty-four thousand dollar, uh, uh. Uh, control panel, we don't know, we have no competitive, not looking at anything else. And so the thought that we would just spend this kind of money is just kind of, I'm a little incensed by it, that we don't, we don't look a little further into it, this isn't an emergency change out. They've been running for all these years, and they run just fine right now, and you've got two of them, so it's not dire straits. So I'm, I'm just kind of incensed, we don't look further, my thoughts are, you need to have luck sessions, so you, so you hash this stuff out before you have a meeting on it. And I, I think that you need to spend time looking at these things before you spend these couple of months of money. And I know, I know it's hard to do in this setting, if you're not actually around the table looking at each other, so you can actually, not only voice inflection, but eye rolls and whatever else is involved in this, so you really feel each other out what's going on. Personally, be under, under the camera all the time, so my thoughts just are that, that, uh, 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 this might be the best price, but I don't think it is. In fact, I'm sure it's not, in fact, tomorrow, I'm gonna call Roar Pumping and see what a, see what an eight thousand GPM pump would cost us. Because then all of a sudden, and if it's a, if it's a, if it's an equal price or similar price, now probably I'm gonna say it's similar price. But if it's a lower price, I'm gonna water over it, and I'll let you know about it, because this is my attachment respect. Very important to me, I'm as a business owner, we got, we can't raise taxes, we have to be competitive, if anything, we have to lower, uh, make our costs competitive than everybody else's, irregardless of what the, what bill rate is. So, I mean, the, the way governments are run personally, see, uh, my private issue, uh, obviously.
I, I appreciate your input, I wish you'd spoken sooner.
I said, I said, why would wait, table's not an emergency, I told you that.
Well.
And you start in your head, do that, and say, that's fine, that's fine, but you didn't have a work session, so this in-depth discussion wasn't there.
I appreciate it. Like I said, I wish you'd been, had your same passion you did now during the discussion.
Okay.
I didn't.
Uh, we, it'll be my fault, my fault, I'll take the, I'll take the brunt for you guys spending a quarter million.
During the discussion, I. No, I just say, I pr- I do appreciate you gonna let, let us know what to find out.
I will.
I do appreciate it, I do really do, so, uh, last item on the agenda.
The adjourn?
Yeah, most.
I moved to adjourn.
All right.
Say again.
I'll say, I'll, just, I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
We're gonna do it together.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.